Goodbye, Ray. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank everyone for taking time to be in attendance with us tonight for tonight's school board meeting. Before I call the meeting to order, we have a special person here with us tonight. Bentley Bergeron, an eighth grade student from J.B. Martin Middle School, will lead us in a prayer before the pledge. Bentley is the dance team captain, also a member of the J.B. Martin Beta Club, and is active in her local community and church. Following the prayer, Mr. John Smith will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise if you can?
Thank you.
Lord God, thank you so much for this day and opportunity to pray for our school board members. I pray for each and every school board member here, their families, all of the staff, teachers, and faculty members. Lord, I pray you give them guidance as wisdom as they begin this meeting. I pray for our entire school district as we start a new school year. We trust in your perfect wisdom, ask that you direct this meeting according to your will. In Jesus's name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Bentley, and we hope you have a wonderful rest of this school year.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good night. Call this meeting to order. Let the record show that all board members are present, as well as Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling and our secretary, Mrs. Shelley Babanel. First item on the agenda is 2.01 Resolution in Memory of Barbara Harris. Mr. John Smith will read that resolution, and if someone from Mrs. Harris's family is here, he will present that resolution, along with Superintendent Ortling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas Ms. Barbara Harris was an educator in the St. Charles Parish Public School System for 33 years, and whereas Ms. Harris served as a teacher, coach, administrative assistant, interim principal and principal, therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Ms. Barbara Harris that sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow. And therefore, and be it further resolved that the page in the minute in the September 18th, 2024 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to the Harris family. I move approval.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. O'Quinn. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Gregson?
No, that's an error, sir.
The resolution, let the record show the resolution is unanimously approved. Is someone here from Ms. Harris's family? Mr. Smith? You go ahead and present that. Thank you. John. Where was that? You got one. Your legs. Yours. Yours is dead. Ruth Matherne. Ms. Karen Boudreaux is going to read and present that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas Mrs. Ruth Matherne was a school nurse for 25 years, with 15 of those years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and whereas Ms. Matherne served as a school nurse and head nurse at Central Office, therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mrs. Ruth Matherne its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the September 18th, 2024 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Matherne's family. Mr. President, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Boudreaux. It's motion by Mrs. Boudreaux, second by Mrs. Weber. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Ruth Matherne is unanimously approved. Is someone here? Brenda Tupe. And who's going to read that one? Mrs. Weber is going to read that one.
Whereas Ms. Brenda Tupe serves as an educator in the St. Charles Parish Public School System for 36 years. Whereas Ms. Tupe served as a librarian, curriculum and instruction supervisor, resource specialist, and administrator of instructional technology. Therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish Public School hereon express in the family of the late Ms. Brenda Tupe its sincere sympathy in their time of sorrow. Be it further resolved that a page in the September 18th, 2024 Board Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and a copy of this resolution to present, present it to Ms. Tupe's family. Mr. President, I move that we approve this resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Weber, and a second by Mr. O'Quinn to approve the resolution in memory of Mrs. Becky Weber. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Brenda Tupe, I'm sorry. Any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. That resolution is unanimously approved, along with the superintendent, the real Ms. Becky Weber will present that resolution on behalf of the board and superintendent. I skipped one. I skipped one. This one. I didn't do this one.
You did Brenda Tupe.
Okay, our next resolution is 2.04 Resolution in Memory of Ms. Rosalyn LaCruz. Mr. Ray Gregson, would you read this one for me?
Yes, sir. I'd be honored, Mr. President. Excuse me. Resolution in memory of Ms. Rosalyn LaCruz. Whereas Ms. Rosalyn LaCruz was an educator for 22 years, and 17 of those years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and whereas Ms. LaCruz served as a teacher at Luling Elementary School and Carver Early Learning Center. Therefore be it resolved that in the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Ms. Rosalyn LaCruz its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the September 18th, 2024 Board Minute Meeting Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of the resolution be presented to Ms. LaCruz's family. Mr. President, I move that we approve the memory resolution for Ms. Rosalyn LaCruz.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gregson, and second by Scott. Is there any board discussion?
Mr. President, if I could take a moment, it might be hard for me to get through, but Ms. LaCruz was my youngest son's first teacher in pre-K at Luling Elementary. She always went above and beyond, and because of Ms. LaCruz, he has progressed beyond the goals set for him and continues to be successful today. She will always be remembered in a special place in our heart.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. Is there any more discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Rosalyn LaCrouch is unanimously approved. Mr. Gregson, along with the superintendent, will present a copy of the resolution to Ms. Next item on our agenda is High School Centennial Anniversary Proclamation, which will be read and presented by Mr. Al Sufferin, along with Superintendent Ken Ortling, Dr. Ken Ortling.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is truly an honor to present this proclamation. High School Centennial Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas Deschrahan and Hanville High Schools, cornerstones of our community, are celebrating their centennial anniversaries this school year, marking 100 years of excellence in education, tradition, and community spirit since their establishment in 1924. And whereas for a century, Deschrahan and Hanville High Schools have provided an exceptional education, producing generations of leaders, innovators, and engaged citizens who have contributed significantly to the growth and development of St. Charles Parish. And whereas the original Deschrahan and Hanville High School buildings have held immense sentimental value for generations of students, educators, and community members alike, representing the foundation upon which these esteemed institutions were built. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board recognizes the significance of this 100-year milestone and the importance of preserving our heritage, fostering a sense of continuity, and ensuring the legacy of Deschrahan and Hanville High Schools endures for future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that this proclamation be recorded in the official records of the St. Charles Parish School Board to serve as a lasting reminder of our shared history and the enduring bonds of the Deschrahan and Hanville High School communities as we celebrate 100 years of educational excellence and community pride. And, Mr. President, I move that we adopt this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
I second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mrs. Weber. Is there any board discussion? If not, please cast your vote. That resolution, High School Centennial Anniversary, that proclamation is unanimously approved. Tonight, both of our high schools have been hard at work preparing centennial festivities for this celebratory year, in addition to gathering artifacts and memorabilia donated by the community to represent each school's history. I would like to recognize two of the community donors who are here with us tonight. Mr. Larry Sesser, and representing the Vial family, Ms. Lisa Prassa. Also present are Deschrahan High School Principal, Mr. Jason Mythere, and Hanville High School Principal, Mr. Jose Gonzalez. Thank you all for being here, and I look forward to celebrating throughout the year with you. Mr. Sufferin and Dr. Ortling will present this proclamation to all of the people that I just named. to leave at this time, if you wish. Thank you all for being here, and have a great evening. We shall resume. Next item on our agenda is the United Way Month Proclamation. Mr. Gregson is going to read this proclamation.
Sure, Mr. President, I'd be honored. The United Way Month Proclamation. Whereas on October 3rd, 2024, United Way of St. Charles will officially begin its annual campaign to raise funds to meet vital health and human service needs for St. Charles Parish. And whereas the mission of this organization is to advance with member agencies the health and human service agenda of St. Charles Parish by expanding resources and applying them effectively to meet community needs. And whereas hundreds of volunteers have come together each year in St. Charles Parish to participate in raising the needed funds through their annual campaign. And whereas these funds are used to touch the lives of thousands of people through such programs as disaster relief, rehabilitation, and counseling for the mentally and physically disabled, and special programs for the youth and elderly. And whereas widespread public support of the human service organizations funded by the United Way of St. Charles makes St. Charles Parish a better place for all of its citizens. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board wishes to join the great people of St. Charles Parish to live united, to care about continuing to improve our quality of life by supporting the United Way of St. Charles. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, do hereby proclaim the month of October as United Way Month in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Mr. President, I move that we accept the United Way Month Proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gregson, and second by Mr. Cody. Is there any board discussion or superintendent?
Mr. President, I'd like at this time to invite Ms. Tamara Platsmeyer here from United Way of St. Charles. She's the volunteer events manager to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you so much for recognizing the United Way. We appreciate your support and your partnership. We're very grateful. I just want to say a few words to kick off the United Ways Campaign this year. Battle for the Paddle is coming up in a couple of weeks. It's going to be on Thursday, October 3rd, held at the Edward Dufresne Community Center. The gates will open at 3:00 to the public. It's $10 to get in, all you can eat. We have a record number of teams this year. 230 teams have registered so far, and we're still a couple of weeks out, so we're very excited. We'll have live music, Ryan Foray and the Foray Tradition. It's a really good event for the community, I think. You know, it's a good way to get everybody together in a fun, safe environment, and really raise the awareness for the United Way. That's the whole goal here, right? I know it's a big party in the parish, but that's really what we're doing, is trying to bring to the attention that, you know, the things that we're doing in the community really make a difference in people's lives. You know, we help kids get fed on the weekends, we help cancer patients. There's so many things that I could list, but those will just be it. So, yeah, I'm asking everybody to come out and have a good time at the Battle for the Paddle Thursday, October 3rd. If you're interested in competing, registration is still open. You can go to our website. I think the fee increases on Friday, though, so get it in. Anyway, thank you for letting me come up here, and thank you for recognizing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Platsmeyer. Any board discussion, further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Next item on the agenda is National School Lunch Week Proclamation, and Mr. O'Quinn is going to read this one.
I'd be honored to read this, Mr. President, being that lunch was my favorite part of the school day. National School Lunch Week Proclamation. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over 60 years through advanced practices and nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children. And whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, proclaim the week of October 14th through 18th, 2024, as the dates to observe National School Lunch Week, and we encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutritional habits, in hope of achieving a more healthy serenity for today and for the future. And I move adoption.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Quinn. Was it Mr. Sufferin second? Motion by Mr. O'Quinn, second by Mr. Sufferin. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to invite Ms. Jenny DeRoche, Director of Child Nutrition, to come up and say a few words. And I also want to thank those lunch ladies back there for being here tonight. When I go to the schools, there's no greater set of teammates than I see when I go into the cafeteria. The love that they give, not just their food, but our kids, is second to none, so thank you for being here.
Thank you all for having us tonight, and for recognizing National School Lunch Week. I just did a little statistics, because I like statistics, and last year we served over 1.8 million meals. So that kind of tells you how hard our folks are working every day. This year, for National School Lunch Week, it actually falls during our fall break, but we will be there for a couple of days, so we have some fun things planned for our students. Middle school, high school, we'll have a little special goodie for them. It's, the theme is like pirates, so it's pirate booty. And then for our elementary, we'll have some books, some stickers, just the fun stuff that the elementary kids love. So we are planning to celebrate during that week, even though it's a short week for us. So thank you all for having us. Thank you guys for coming. They're nothing but supportive these days.
Thank you, Ms. DeRoche. Any additional discussion?
I would just like to say that you all know my favorite meal, it's on TikTok that I did, turkey stew, and you got to dip the bread into the stew. It's outstanding. Thank you.
Any more? If not, please cast your vote. While I'm waiting on the vote, will our special guests like to be photographed to document this event?
Yes.
They love you.
Okay, Mr. O'Quinn. You got to go be with them. That's cool.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm tired, I mean, you can't make chocolate chip cookies for your neighbors, I'm just saying.
Come on here, Mr. Rogers.
be read by Mrs. Becky Weber.
Whereas St. Charles Parish School bus operators are a vital part of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, traveling more than 1.5 million miles each year as they transport more than 5,000, excuse me, 8,000 students each day to and from school and school sanctioned activities. activities. Whereas St. Charles Parish School Bus operators are committed to professional development and training to improve their knowledge and skills to a comprehensive program of public awareness, continuing education, and advocacy to better traffic and road conditions as a way to ensure safety and well-being of students and other drivers who share the district roadways with school buses. And whereas more than 200 Transportation Department employees, including operators, dispatchers, trainers, technicians, and staff, and support staff involved in the transportation program, have compiled an outstanding safety record in Louisiana. And whereas the week of October 21st through the 25th, 2024, is National School Bus Safety Week throughout the nation in recognition of contributions of operators and other school transportation staff made to the nation's public education system. It is fitting that we set aside a special time to commend these dedicated employees. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board supports the goals and ideas of National School Bus Safety Week and encourages all citizens to recognize St. Charles Parish School Bus operators and support staff for the services they provide. Mr. President, I move that we accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber.
I'll second.
A motion by Mrs. Weber and a second by Mrs. Boudreaux, thinks she's BTR. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Weber. No, ma'am. Go.
Real quick, and some people may know this and some may not. And I didn't realize it until I read it, but my mother was a school bus driver for many, many, many years in St. Charles Parish. And the love that she showed to those children was nothing but the most. And I'm sure Mr. John Smith remembers her as well. And so I really feel like this is something that those people, these operators do for our children as they board every morning and as they get off every afternoon. So I cannot thank them enough.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber.
Mr. President, I'd like Mr. Gordon Terrell, Director of Transportation, to come up and say a few words as well. Thank you.
Good evening, School Board members and Superintendent Odling. I want to first take this opportunity to thank you tonight for our wonderful, on behalf of our wonderful Transportation Department. We recognize School Bus Safety Week, and we want to take a moment to highlight the critical role of school buses play in our students' daily lives. Every day, as we said, we transport thousands of students to school safely. As you can imagine, this is no small task. And thanks to our dedicated drivers, monitors, transportation staff, and the safety protocols this district has put in place that allows us to provide such essential services. We have implemented programs within our schools to teach safety while riding the school bus at every level. Programs such as our pre-K to second grade training, where our bus operators go to the schools with our younger students and spend time with them, working on the school bus safety rules, and explaining to them why it's so important that they follow these rules to ensure a safe ride to school and home every day. We also show them how to work the emergency exits and let them have hands-on touching of these and operation of them so that they know how this may benefit them if it is an accident or unfortunate emergency. Bus safety is a shared responsibility. While drivers are well-trained and our buses are maintained to the highest standards, it is also important for students, our parents, and our community to do their part. Reminding children to follow the bus safety rules, watching out for school buses on the road, and fostering an overall culture of safety makes a huge difference to everyone. School Bus Safety Week is about raising awareness, showing appreciation to those who ensure our students' safety, continuing to promote safe practices both on and off the bus. I'd like to express our sincere appreciation for the School Bus Appreciation Proclamation. And we thank you once again on behalf of the Transportation Department. And together, we are committed to keeping our students safe each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I would just like to say, thank you, thank you to Mr. Terrell and Mr. Rogers Department. It's, look, the logistics of transportation, I can't even imagine. I'm not even going to try. It's no small feat, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson. There isn't any more discussion, please cast your vote. On National School Bus Safety Week proclamation. The National School Bus Safety Week proclamation is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is Louisiana Educational Diagnostics Month proclamation. Mr. Scott Cody, would you read this proclamation?
Certainly, Mr. President. First, are there any educational diagnosticians in the room? No? Man, I was hoping y'all had like a shorter way that y'all talked about yourselves. Okay. Here we go. Louisiana Educational Diagnostics Month proclamation. Whereas children have a natural desire and propensity to learn, and it is imperative to adequately support the needs to children and youth. And whereas children have a right to a high-quality education that meets their individual needs. And whereas children's mental health is closely linked to their successful learning and development, and schools must apply sound psychological principles to instruction and learning, cultivate children's intellectual, social, and emotional development, and promote prevention and early intervention. And whereas schools must ensure a safe, healthy environment for all children and be able to recognize and respond to their emotional, psychological, diagnostic needs, including those caused by a crisis. And whereas educational diagnosticians, experts in both qualitative and quantitative analysis are specially trained to help parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, create effective caring schools, access helpful community resources, and implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies to foster healthy child development and academic success. And whereas during Louisiana Educational Diagnostics Month, we recognize the vital role that educational diagnosticians play in the personal and academic development of Louisiana's children. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, hereby proclaim October 2024 as Louisiana Educational Diagnostics Month in St. Charles Parish Schools. Mr. President, I move to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. A motion by Mr. Cody is seconded by Mr. Oakland. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'm going to ask that Ms. Mindy Van Hoven, Director of Special Education, come to the mic and say a few words.
Very well read, Mr. Cody. And it's Ed Die. Ed Die is what we call them for sure.
I'll read this all the time. Ed Die.
Good evening, Board members and superintendent. I would like to take a moment to highlight the vital role that educational diagnosticians play in our school district. These dedicated professionals are essential in ensuring that all students receive the personalized support that they need both to thrive academically and socially. Educational diagnosticians are experts trained to assess students' learning needs and challenges. Their primary responsibility is to evaluate students and diagnose learning disabilities, developmental delays, and other educational issues that might affect a child's progress. By bridging the gap between educational theory and practical classroom application, educational diagnosticians are essential in fostering an inclusive, supportive educational environment. Their work ensures that every student, regardless of their challenges, has the opportunity to achieve their best. Thank you for recognizing the individuals. Thank you for recognizing the invaluable contributions of our educational diagnosticians in shaping a brighter future for all of our students.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hoven. Any more discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The 2024 Ed Die Month proclamation is approved. Next item on our agenda is Digital Wellness Month proclamation. Mrs. Boudreaux, would you please read this proclamation?
All right. Digital wellness. I can say that. Okay. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools recognizes that our students are members of an increasingly connected digital society. And whereas curriculum, instruction, and assessment is increasingly being assessed through a variety of online learning platforms that transform the way our students explore, create, connect, and learn. And whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools uses digital resources to provide innovative, meaningful, and equitable educational experiences across the district. And whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools is committed to creating a culture of learning that prepares students to become future-ready. And whereas St. Charles Parish Public Schools is committed to supporting educators and parents in preparing students to use digital media while limiting the risks of the online world, such as loss of privacy, cyberbullying, and copyright infringement. And whereas raising awareness of responsible digital wellness is beneficial to the safety and well-being of our students, their families, and St. Charles Parish. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Digital Wellness Month. I move that we approve this.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Boudreaux, second by Mr. Suffering. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, just want to say that our digital wellness program started actually last year by Ms. Kelsey Heagle, our Coordinator of Instructional Technology. I want to thank her for being here tonight, as well as the work that she's done to roll that out. And that will be done all through the month of October. And we're one of only very few school systems that have a digital wellness program. So once again, kudos to Ms. Heagle.
Thank you, Dr. Odling. Any more discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 2.10 Digital Wellness Month proclamation is unanimously approved. Moves us to our business items. Item 3.01 Board Meeting Minutes. The, we have for consideration the committee, Board Committee Meetings of August 19th, 2024, the Board Meeting Minutes of August 21st, 2024, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting Minutes from September 6th, 2024, and the Budget Review Committee Meeting Minutes from September 4th.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the Board Meeting Minutes as noted.
Thank you, Mr. Suffering.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Suffering, second by Mrs. Weber. Is there any discussion or corrections? If not, please cast your vote. Those Board Meeting Minutes are unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is Cyber Liability Insurance Renewal. The Board purchases cyber liability insurance to financially protect the district from cyber attack claims brought against the School Board by third parties. The district's cyber liability insurance will expire September 30th, 2024. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on September 16th and is aligned with GOD of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the continuation of cyber liability insurance with Tokyo Marine, option two, as discussed in executive session.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Oakland. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.02 Cyber Liability Insurance Renewal is unanimously approved. Our next item is 3.03 The Booking Group Contract. The LaFawn Performance Arts Center is unable to produce Dear Evan Hansen on November 29th. The district is seeking to terminate the current contract with the Booking Group. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on September 16th and is aligned with GOD of the Board Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the request to terminate the contract with the Booking Group.
I second.
A motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mrs. Weber. Is there any discussion? No discussion, please cast your vote. The Booking Group contract is unanimously approved or terminated. Next item on the agenda is renewal of Medicare Advantage Plan. On September 1st, 2008, the Board first offered retirees with Medicare the option of continuing traditional Medicare or converting to the private FIFA Service Plan offered by Humana. Humana submitted a renewal plan on January, beginning January 1st, 2025, that continues existing coverage at a 12.93% increase. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting on Monday, September 6th.
Mr. President, I move to approve the renewal of the Medicare Advantage Plan from Humana at an approximate cost of $2,294,693.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cody, second by Mr. Oakland to approve the renewal of the Medicare Advantage Plan. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.04 Renewal of Medicare Advantage Plan is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is the selection of School Board's excess liability insurance. School Board purchased excess liability insurance to protect the district from claims brought by third parties. Current coverage is provided for excess general auto educators, legal, employment practices, sexual abuse, and molestation liability. The district also covers unmanned aerial vehicles or drones. The renewal of the excess liability insurance coverage will take effect on October 1st, 2024. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting on September 16th.
Mr. President, I move to approve the renewal of the excess liability insurance package with Old Republic at a cost of $572,938.50.
I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cody and a second by Mrs. Weber to approve the selection of excess liability insurance. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.05 Item 3.05 Selection of School Board Excess Liability Insurance is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is 3.06 Request for Qualifications for Electronic Inventory. Requests for qualifications were sought from several professional services through advertisements for electronic inventory services. The district received one response to the request. The Risk Management and Insurance Committee reviewed and evaluated statements of the qualifications based upon criteria set forth in the request for qualifications. The selection of SALUS, that's the name of the company, S-A-L-U-S, will provide the district with high-quality services. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee meeting on September 16, and is aligned with GO D of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move to accept the proposal from SALUS for electronic inventory services at a cost of $348,000, to be spread out over three years at equal increments of $116,000 per year.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Oakway. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.06 Electronic Inventory Request for Qualifications is unanimous. No, it's not. It is approved, seven yes, one no, no abstentions. Next item on the agenda is 3.07 Bid Authorization Request for Elementary Schools Running Tracks and Fitness Stations Project. The elementary schools running tracks and fitness stations is an approved project under Phase Two of the Long Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletic Facilities. The plans for the projects have been completed by the architect and are ready for bid. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting of the board on Monday, September 16, and is aligned with GO E of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid authorization request for elementary school running tracks and fitness stations project.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gregson, second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion on this item? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.07 Bid Authorization Request for Elementary School Running Tracks and Fitness Stations Project is unanimously approved. Next item, 3.08 Request for Proposals for Building Automation System and Chiller Maintenance Services. The existing building automation system currently serves 22 sites and provides annual service on seven chillers. The physical plant maintenance department is in the process of completing the request for proposals for building automation system and chiller maintenance service. Use of the building automation system creates a comfortable, climate-controlled environment conducive for teaching and learning. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee meeting on Monday, September 16, and is aligned with GO E of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the authorized request for proposals for the building automation system and chiller maintenance service.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gregson, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Is there any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.08 Request for Proposals for Building Automation System and Chiller Maintenance Services unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is 3.09 Job Descriptions Revision for Early Childhood. The Phase Two and Three Department Reorganization Plan aligned with LeanFrog's recommendation and approved at the board meeting on April 17, 2024, included the creation of the Director of Early Childhood Education position. In an effort to ensure responsibilities aligned with the new organizational structure for early childhood, job descriptions have been revised to enhance operational efficiencies. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job descriptions revision to the board. This item agenda, this agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting on Monday, September 16.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the job description revisions for early childhood.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody. Is there any board discussion or superintendent? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.09 Job Description Revisions for Early Childhood is unanimously approved. Next item on our agenda is 3.10 Revisions to Board Policy 1.2.2 Qualifications for School Board Members, First Reading.
Mr. President, if I may, I would like to move that we adopt a consent agenda for items 3.10, 3.11, and 3.12. All three are revisions to board policies that we discussed during our committee meeting on Monday.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, and second by Mr. Cody to consent agenda items 3.10, 3.11, and 3.12. Please cast your vote on that motion.
And this is just to act on the motion to consent?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Mr. Sufferin. To group those three agenda items?
We shouldn't be voting at this time. You've got to come back and vote.
You've got to vote on the items.
So we need to just show a hand, thumbs up for the approval on this?
Shelley, were you able to? Okay. Okay, a visual vote on, okay. Okay, that motion to group those three agenda items together is approved. Now we're going to take action on all three at the same time. What's your pleasure?
Right, I think we did have the opportunity to do it electronically.
Okay, so we voted electronically on them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, on.
We just premature on the first one.
Okay. Items 3.10, 3.11, and 3.12 is unanimously approved. That brings us to item 3.13, the Early Childhood Education Program Lead Agency Network Funding. The St. Charles Parish Public Schools Early Childhood Educational Program/Lead Agency Network experienced a significant decrease in grant funding for the 2024-2025 school year, with a decrease of approximately $443,605. This reduction impacts the funding for the salaries and benefits of three positions, Ready Start Program Director and two Early Childhood Family Center liaisons. The proposal to hire a Ready Start Program Director with Ready Start Grant Funds was noted to be at no cost to the district, and the position would be eliminated if and when grant funds were not awarded. The board approved this at the June 24, 2020 board meeting, a long time ago. The proposal to hire two Early Childhood Family Center liaisons with Ready Start and B3 grant funding were presented to the board at no cost to the district, and the positions would be eliminated if and when grant funds were not awarded. The board approved this at the board meeting on June 23, 2021. Once through, once thorough analysis regarding the impact of these positions has been completed, a final recommendation will be presented to the board. However, it is proposed that the board approves the supplemental funding for the 2024-2025 school year for the salaries and benefit of the Ready Start Program Director and the two Early Childhood Family Center liaisons for $89,172.16. This agenda item was reviewed at the board's Personnel and Policy Committee meeting on Monday, September 24.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve the supplemental funding for the Early Childhood Education Program Lead Agency Network through December of 2024 at a cost of $44,586.8.
Second.
That is not the agenda item, so you need to announce that you're making a substitute motion.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, this is a different than the agenda item. So I want everybody to be clear. The agenda item is, let me see what the, there's no. Okay. Right, I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on the motion. Was there a second? Motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody to approve the supplemental funding only through December 2024. Any discussion? I'm sorry?
The cost was noted at $44,586.8.
If there's no discussion, please cast your.
Well, I'd just like to say that I think in December they'll come back to us and make a recommendation.
That is not in his motion. His motion is that funding be approved through December. If the board goes on that motion, then the board is saying after December, boom. That's good.
Mr. Sufferin, you want to explain your motion?
Well, I think the background, as you noted in the background, I think it was noted that there will be an analysis regarding the impact of these positions, and a final recommendation on whether to retain or eliminate them will be presented to the board no later than the December 11, 2024 board meeting.
That is not in your motion.
No.
Your motion was, you can repeat it. The motion was to fund the program for $44,000 through December. It included no stipulations with regard to anything other than terminating at the end of December. Want to include that, then, we need to do that, or if you want to amend that motion or make a substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I think I would like to do that and modify it to stipulate that an analysis will be completed, and a recommendation will be made and presented to the full board no later than the December 11, 2024 board meeting.
A motion?
And I'll second that amended motion.
And a second.
And the board would consider whether it want to continue the program through the end of the school year or beyond.
Any more discussion? If not, please cast your vote. That motion passes. Five yes, three nos. Next item on our agenda is 3.14 Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resource Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, September 16, and is aligned with GO C of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I'll move that we receive the personnel items as presented to the board.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Cody to receive the personnel items as presented to the board. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.14 Personnel Items are unanimously received by the board. Next item, 3.15 State Funded Stipend to the District. The Louisiana Legislature has appropriated funds for public school districts to pay one-time stipends to employees in the amount of $2,000 to each certificated employee, and $1,000 to each support employee. The district will pay these stipends on October 18, 2024. This item, oh well, I'm going to read some more of this. These state-funded stipends are in addition to the district-funded recruitment and retention payments of $2,000 to full-time and permanent part-time employees approved by the board at its April 17, 2024 meeting, of which, and which will also be paid on October 18, 2024. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting on September 16, and is aligned with GO C, GO C and D of the board's strategic action plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the state-funded stipends for district employees as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gregson, second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote.
Just before you move on that, for clarification purposes, the board just recently completed its salary study, and that salary study was meant to provide some equalization in the salary. This stipend from the board, I mean from the state, we need to have some clarification to make sure that the public as well as employees understand that this will not affect the salaries that's paid to individuals. This is a one-time payment. So would you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. This was passed outside of the MFP relative to payment. This was passed outside of the MFP relative to payment for these employees. It's being directed from the State Department, so it'll be a separate stipend, separate from their salary, and our employees will be notified via Public Information Department. And the superintendent is excluded from both sets of stipends.
As well as the school board.
As well.
As well as the school board.
Any more discussion? If not, please cast your vote. The state-funded stipends to district employees is unanimously approved. Next item on agenda is 3.16, accounts payable for the month of August 2024 in the grand total amount of $12,708,419.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of August 2024.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Gregson, second by Mrs. Boudreau to approve the accounts payable for the month of August. Any discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Item 3.16, accounts payable for the month of August 2024 is unanimously approved. That brings us to closing items, standing committee reports. Will the Chairman of any standing committee like to present a report to the Board? You can do so at this time.
Mr. President, I would. The Finance and Audit Committee consisting of me, Mr. Al Suffering, and Ms. Karen Boudreau met on Monday, September 16th, would discuss two items, the state-funded stipend to district employees and the accounts payable for the month of August 2024. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gregson.
Mr. President, the Risk Management Insurance Committee consisting of Mrs. Becky Weber, Mr. Art Oakland, and myself met twice this month. Friday, September 6, the committee held a special meeting with Salus, the electronic inventory provider, to help us better understand their service and how it would benefit the district. This past Monday, the committee discussed several items, including the renewal of the district's Medicare Advantage Plan and excess liability insurance. The committee would like to say a special thanks to Mrs. Daranisha Gales, Mr. Johnny Rome, and Mr. Cade Rogers. Their diligence and promptness to provide information and work with the best interest of this district in mind led to cost savings in several areas and a deeper understanding of the services we are providing to not only our students, but our teachers, our employees, and our retirees. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Mr. President, the Personnel and Policy Committee consisting of myself, Mr. Alexander, and Mr. Cody met on Monday, September 16th, and we covered seven items. Six of the seven items were on the agenda for this, for the full Board to consider during this meeting, and they were approved. They consisted of revisions to three Board policies, job description revisions for early childhood, supplemental funding for the Early Childhood Education Program Lead Agency Network and personnel notes. The only item that was for committee discussion only was revisions to Board Procedure 4.7.9 Sick Leave Bank. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Suffering. Anyone else? If not, the Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday. There were three items on the agenda, two of which were approved tonight, the bid authorization request for the elementary school running tracks and fitness station, and a request for proposals for building automation system and chiller maintenance. The third item on our agenda was for committee meeting only, and it was the selection of an architect to work on the cafeteria serving lines project at Homerville High School. And that concludes my report. Next item is the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the athletic season is underway, please remember that St. Charles Parish Public Schools has a bag protocol for safety purposes. Fans can carry see-through bags of any size, non-seethrough bags, no larger than eight and a half by 11 inches, small clutch bags with or without a handle or strap. This bag protocol will be in place for games and athletic contests. The complete bag protocol and frequently asked questions are available on the district's website. Also, tobacco and tobacco products are strictly prohibited on school grounds as stipulated in policy and state law. We appreciate your cooperation. Congratulations to Ms. Rebecca Mathurn, Principal of New Sarpy Elementary School, on being selected as this year's St. Charles Parish Public Schools Principal of the Year. She's an exceptional leader who leads by example and with her heart and always puts our students first. She'll represent this district well on the next level of state competition. We also look forward to celebrating her in the weeks to come. As a reminder, fall break is on October 14th and 15th. Schools will be closed both these days, and Central Office will be closed on October 14th but open on October 15th. In conjunction with Digital Wellness Month, as mentioned earlier, our Digital Wellness Plan will be rolling out this month to ensure we focus on all aspects of students' educational careers. The plan will educate students about maintaining a healthy balance of appropriate technology use. The plan will consist of a three-pronged informational approach focusing on delivering engaging content to students, parents, and teachers based on one monthly theme. The first week of the month, the first week of the month will consist of a short video introducing the month's theme. Each of the following weeks will include additional information related to the theme, tips for safe technology use, and graphics to engage students, parents, and teachers. We're asking families to be on a lookout for these materials. We must partner in this knowledge-building effort because digital wellness extends beyond our classrooms. And finally, once again, the Satellite Center Health Science classes are partnering with the American Cancer Society to raise money during the 13th Annual Breast Cancer Awareness Project, Pink Links. Students sell Pink Links for a dollar, and schools participate to help raise money as the East and West Banks compete to see who will raise the most money for breast cancer research. The competition winner will be revealed during halftime on the night of the Homerville-Destrahan football game on November 4th. Last year's winner was Destrahan, both football game and Pink Links. The chains will be pulled out on the field along the sidelines. After the winner is announced, the chains will be joined to show how St. Charles Parish's community supports breast cancer awareness. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Super.
I move that we adjourn also.